Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:10 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins? Mr. Scirvano? Mrs. McCulloch? Mr. Siegel? Mr. Connor? Mr. Escobedo? With seven present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any students here for helping us with media, so we'll jump right into recognition. Mr. Earl Dotson will do student recognition and staff recognition.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, board members. Five athletes from the RPS 205 qualified for the IHSA Class 3A Boys Track and Field Tournament. Guilford sophomore Kevion Pope qualified and competed in the triple jump. East senior Ronald Davis and Guilford seniors Damonte Reed and Jamelle Page qualified and competed in the 100-meter dash. Auburn senior Michael Holloman qualified and competed in the 200-meter dash. Congratulations to these athletes, their coaches, families, and teachers who have supported them throughout the season. Please join me in congratulating these student athletes this evening.
All right, Jimmy!
Well done. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Very proud of you. Congratulations. Good work. Great job. Very proud of you. Congratulations. My daughters are Guilford Vikings.
Auburn High School had two tennis players make it to the IHSA State Tournament in May. Freshman Quentin Navenhoven went into the state tournament as the number-two-ranked freshman in the state. He lost in the sixth consolation round and told the Register-Star, "Even though I lost, it was good experience. I played well and fought hard. I'm just happy I made it this far. I always have the next three years." Junior Titus Metzler tied for seventh place in the state tournament, and medals are given to the top eight players in the state. That means Titus earned one of the first state tennis medals in singles play for our area in 20 years for his outstanding play this season. Once again, congratulations to these athletes, their coaches, families, and teachers who have supported them throughout this season. We're looking forward to next year. Please join me in congratulating these student athletes. And I just have to do this, but, you know, we love supportive parents, even though I said family. So let's give it up for the parents who are here. We did have a teacher recognition, but I don't believe there... Itasha Montgomery? Oh, she is here. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Guilford High School Spanish teacher Itasha Montgomery was named the 13WREX Teacher of the Week in March. The station noted Mrs. Montgomery's bubbly personality and compliments from her students about her teaching style and compassion. She's taught for 19 years, the past 17, at Guilford High School. Congratulations, Mrs. Montgomery. And thank you for your contributions to our students and the Rockford community. All right. Thank you. That is all.
We are now at the petitions and communications portion of our meeting when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government, as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communications portions of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. We only have one speaker, so I would just... I'll skip here and go... Since there are... It's not appropriate to address individual board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. And I'll just remind you that we have the clock on the wall to help you with your time. We thank you for your interest and your cooperation with our guidelines. We have one speaker tonight, Ms. Allison Wang.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. From a previous board meeting, it appears that the new elementary school design involves glass windows between classrooms rather than traditional walls, and I'd like to share my thoughts on the pros and cons of this. With glass walls, classrooms can transform from small group spaces to full-grade collaboration space, allowing all students to engage and work together. It can also promote greater transparency in the school. Collaborative environments are very important. The biggest concern that I think everyone shares about glass walls will be, will what? Glass walls between classrooms lead to more distractions? So even if the bottom half of the glass is frosted, there will still be shadows of other classrooms penetrating through the frosted glass, and we know that small kids are always curious about what they cannot fully see. This new, exciting image can tempt students to focus away from learning. And so if glass walls are going to be built, my suggestion is to give teachers the option to draw curtains when needed. This way, it does leave the option open for both cases to be utilized depending on each unpredictable day. Thank you.
I'll back up. The following consent item: Meeting Minutes from May 24, 2016, accounts payable, purchase orders, payroll, construction bid request log, and air travel. Following bid recommendations: diesel fuel, propane fuel tank, and propane fuel supplier, national elementary school site access and paving renovations, the Riverdale Elementary School site work, East High School renovations and upgrades, Auburn High School tennis court project, rebid, and the other consent items, including the 2017-18 academic calendar and the Freedom of Information log. Is there a motion in a second to approve those consent items?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Escobedo?
9A.
Any others? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the items not pulled.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins? Mr. Scirvano?
Abstained.
Mrs. McCulloch? Mr. Siegel? Mr. Connor? Mr. Escobedo? With six yeses, one abstained, the motion passes.
I'll now call for a motion in a second to approve item 9A, which is the 2017-18 academic calendar.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Questions and discussion? Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, so I just wanted to pass some feedback after visiting some schools and talking more with teachers about the concern of possibility of hot days during early start and the possible, you know, the possibility of just having really hot days where student learning may be impede. And just kind of, I guess, interested in hearing from administration on that topic.
I'll be happy to weigh in, and I think Mr. Vosberg could jump in as needed as well. I... We've spent a lot of time listening to concerns in our town hall meeting format throughout the year. We also worked with the REA to create a aptly-named committee called SWEAT, the Superintendent's Weather Extreme Advisory Team, or something along those lines. I think that's what it stood for, SWEAT, and we're working on some common sense things we can do. The larger structural issue, I think, has two long-term solutions to consider. You'll notice the 17-18 calendar that's on the agenda for this evening has moved back a little bit from what we had in place in 16-17, so some of that was taken into consideration with the calendar that was approved for the 17-18 school year. One thing that I think we'll continue to talk about is a calendar that moves way off the current calendar. So far, there has not been an appetite to move to a Labor Day-to-Memorial Day calendar, but that would certainly alleviate some of the risk and potentially mitigate some of the concerns. We will also continue to move forward, I hope, with additional facilities planning four to six years from now as we start to wrap up the current tenure plan. I would encourage our district to move on to a new tenure plan. I don't know any of the details of that. We're a long way away from finishing the current plan, but we'll certainly entertain conversations about structural fixes, potentially involving expanding access to climate-controlled buildings at that point. I don't think there's any ability financially for us to take that on, though, in the near future. So I think that... What we did with the SWEAT committee is really just kind of talked about some common sense ideas about common standards for ceiling fans or lower-cost items, cooling centers, adjusting the dates of the calendar, adjusting start times, access to the buildings in terms of opening up second and third-floor windows to cool things down. A lot of really good common sense suggestions came out of that. We'll see what we can implement there, and also potentially early dismissal, if necessary, or using some days there. So it's certainly a conversation we're continuing to have. I wish we had better answers. There aren't any really easy answers on those hot days, and we do know that's a risk in terms of impacting learning, and we're going to continue to look at better solutions moving forward.
McCulloch?
So I would ask Dr. Jared, because you've had those conversations. I know that there were some board members, not all. I happen to be one of them who was trying to say, "Let's think outside the box," pushing somewhat for the Labor Day start, in large part because of academics. We don't get a lot of time in, and then we shut down, and then we start open again, and then we have the weather issues, and there are so many pieces. And it equalizes the length of the semesters, I believe. Could you just speak to... You said there wasn't an appetite at this time. Can you just speak what... To some of the responses that you received from the staff as to why they're not feeling that that would work as well?
Well, I think when we... When we go out to buildings, there are individuals that certainly have interest in that concept, but when it comes down to it, this is a voluntary participation-based process. And for the people, I think there were 30 to 40 REA members who actively engaged in attending the calendar planning meeting, and you had to participate by filling out a survey. And of those who took the time to participate, either physically or via the survey, the resounding will of the group is still to have a more traditional calendar. I assume that largely is based on lining up with regional school districts, private schools, and having more consistency locally in terms of how we line things up. But I do think there are... I think there's an openness to considering talking about it as we look at the 18-19 and 19-20 calendar, but I don't think... I think whatever we come up with, it'll have to be part of a very open conversation. I think another core issue that came up is changing the current holiday structure and having that be different as well in addition to the start structure. So I think those are the two primary obstacles. And, you know, I think, again, we'll continue to have a willingness on the part of the district to entertain what's best for the learning environment with some of our limitations regarding fully air-conditioned buildings across the district.
I guess... Go ahead, Mr. Rollins.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear for people who aren't aware that this is not... This calendar was not developed, and Dr. Jared was alluding to this, was not developed by the administration. It was actually a calendar that was developed through a committee. I believe Mr. Vosberg participated, but all of the other participants were teachers. There was a committee of volunteer teachers who came together, and they actually came up with, you know, they looked at all of the different factors, including all of the factors that Dr. Jared were alluding to, was alluding to. And they actually came up with two different possibilities. They came up with two different proposals, and they put it to a vote by the REA members. And this calendar is the calendar that was chosen by the majority of the REA members. So I do think we ought to make that clear.
Just one more point of clarification. The driving factor to modify the schedule for this year, which is really, turns out to be three days earlier, was an attempt to balance our semesters and still have final exams for high school students before winter break. We've actually done that the last two years, and parents, students, and high school teachers really enjoyed having that work done before the break. In the past, we have a two-week break, come back for three or four days, and then start finals, which was really difficult academically. So it was an academic-based decision to move it up and try to balance out the semesters, obviously balancing that with the temperatures in the building. We know that that's a risk in August, even in September sometimes with hot temperatures.
Well, my question I wanted to ask, Matt, was about if you went to a Labor Day start, wouldn't that make the balancing of the semesters and the final exams even harder?
Good question.
Okay.
So the problem we were trying to solve was having finals after extended break, two-week break, come back for a couple of days, and then have finals. And those two or three days before finals may just be review days. There's not a lot of new instruction. If we started after Labor Day, the conversation would have been having finals later in January. So you would come back, be in school for two and a half weeks, and then have finals. So it would have been a little different.
That makes sense. Did you have another comment? Was it? Okay, okay.
Okay. Ms. Jackson?
With the calendar, has there been discussion about maybe moving spring break a little later? It used to be in April, I thought, and it seems like it gets earlier where it's a little warmer. Has that ever come up when you guys are talking about the calendar? Has that ever come up when you guys were talking about the calendar?
Yeah, that was debated. There was a lot of different conversations about where to place the break, and some of that is impacted by park testing, SAT tests, ADP exams, and those things.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Now, I'll have the coordinator call the rule on the approval of the 2017-18 academic calendar.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we're now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the salary adjustment for non-bargaining employees and salary range movement, the appointment of Ashley Carlson as a 10-month dean, the appointment of Nikolia Stallings as a 10-month assistant principal, I may not have said that properly, appointment of Scott Dimkey as a 10-month assistant principal, the appointment of Bradley Breakfield as a 10-month assistant principal, the appointment of Amy Galvin as a 10-month special education administrator, appointment of Christina Bagley as a 10-month special education administrator, the appointment of Christina Southwick as a 12-month special education administrator, appointment of Susan Uram as a 12-month dean of elementary math, appointment of Jeremy Aldridge as a 12-month dean of secondary math, the appointment of Dr. Heidi Hui as the 12-month certified executive director of college and career readiness, the appointment of Susan Covington-Fumo as the 12-month director of continuous improvement, the appointment of Kelly Monson as a 12-month director of continuous improvement, the appointment of Renee Slotin-Bochamp as the executive director of nutrition services. See if there's anything on the next page. And the HR organizational report and addendum. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Are there any items that board members would like to have pulled for separate consideration? Now, I'll have the coordinator then call the rule on the approval of the closed session consent items.
Mr. Scravano?
I'm going to abstain.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one no, and one abstained.
Okay, thank you. We're on to the next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett.
Thank you, Mr. Scravano. I have one item that I want to bring to the board's attention, and it's something that I don't want to ring the alarm bells, but I do want to remind the board and the community that at this time, we do not have a state budget. And there is a huge financial impact for not having a state budget, which we do not feel at this time because we are currently in the fiscal year. However, as we go into July, and there, and enter July and there is not a budget, then we are going to have to have some continual conversations about what our approach will be. Districts across the state are all going to be in a very different situation, depending on what the reserve position is, depending on the will of the community, depending on what percentage of funding is local versus state. And I want, as I've done consistently, I'm going to keep our, all of our employee groups as well, including the REA, as well as the board and the community, I want to make sure we're very proactive about this conversation. There is a very high likelihood that at some point this month, cooler heads will prevail, and there will be a resolution, but I want you to have complete certainty of knowing that our financial team is already working on and has developed financial models that will allow us to review potential approaches for the board to weigh in on. We will probably bring those forward as early as June 28th for you to start looking at them if there isn't a resolution at that point. I would not expect any action on anything until July or possibly August. But I want you to know, and I want the community to know, that this is something we have to take very seriously. Again, I hope this is preparation and hard work that our staff is going to put in that we never have to use, because when you talk about the financial impact of not having general state aid in a $400 million budget, of which nearly a huge, huge percentage of that money comes from the state, there will be no easy answers if that is delayed or if it does not come at some point. Again, I have every confidence that this will be resolved and that there will be, that something will occur. I've talked to, been in constant contact with our local legislators, and I know they are committed to a solution, but we also know that there is a very, very difficult conversation going on in Springfield that has not been resolved at this point. So I want you to know that there is more to come at the board level, at the employee level, and at the community level, and that the financial assumptions are being developed as we speak.
I would just add that we did receive a benefit from our IASB membership. Because they forwarded to me and to Dr. Jarrett, and I forwarded that to all of you, you know, the toolkit, now working through the, so. All right. I did that. I did that for you, Mr. Siegel. Very good, okay. Let's move on to committee reports. Ms. McCulloch, the education committee report.
Education committee has not met since our last board meeting. Our next meeting will actually be in July. The next Tuesday, which is our typical meeting night, will be a board meeting to talk about committee structure, so, and make some determination. I would like to make sure everybody is aware, and I don't know our best way to try to get out and really let everybody know that those committee openings exist, and we are taking applicants through June 20th, which is Monday, for all three committees, and that would be education, that'd be operations, and budget and finance. And, excuse me, you can do so by, you can pick up an application down here at the Board of Education, you can get it online, but we'd love to entertain an opportunity to meet with people who are interested in working with us on some working committees for the district. So that ends my report.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rollins, operations?
The operations committee has not met, and the next time it meets, Mr. Connor will be giving the report. So we might want to change that on the agenda.
Okay.
And add the budget and finance committee to the agenda as well.
Okay. We're now on to action items for tonight's meeting. The first action item is the naming and renaming of facilities. That was presented by Mrs. Alt last board meeting. Is there a motion and a second to approve the naming and renaming of facilities?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rollins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Jackson. Please call the rule.
No. Can't we talk about it?
Well, I'm sorry, I mean, yes. Questions or discussion?
I mean, all the feedback I've gotten from people, public and the like, is why would you have two schools of the same name? And so I'd like somebody to speak to the safety issue of it. If we want the schools to be the same name, why don't we make it a K through eight, you know, campus, and just call it one? I'm just not understanding why we want two buildings with the exact same name. I also had some feedback from the people who talked about Hate and, you know, what he has done in the educational community, and so they felt it was disrespectful to take his name off the building. So I'm just, I know that this was brought forward by a group of parents. I don't know if there was conversation at the meeting, but I'm really not prepared to support it unless you can give me, unless you have some good answers.
Mrs. Alt.
Well, good evening. Well, good answers, I guess that kind of depends on what you think is a good answer. I know we have had a small, brief committee that looked at what that name could look like and should look like. And a part of your policy as a board is anytime you switch a program into a school, you have, you can look at how to name that facility. So the first question I do believe that you asked also kind of piggybacked off of what Mr. Scravano asked, I think at the end of last, last meeting. And that actually is about why is it named the same? Safety-wise, what we can say is every building and location in the city has a different number and a different address. So if there was an emergency, that's very differentiated for our public service support. So I think when it comes to that, there should not be an issue with that. How we answer phones, how we answer those types of situations, that committee did discuss that. So one of those things, I know we can have our new principal, Mrs. Powell, kind of speak to that, because she was a part of that committee as well, on how she saw that rolling out for the school building. So I don't want to speak on behalf, but do you want to take that on?
Sure. Hello, board. My name is Jessica Powell. I'm the new principal for the one through four building for the Gifted Academy for Rockford. The process in the meeting that we had involved parents from Gifted Education, so PGE representatives, as well as PTO members from our building, and then by proxy, we had input and voice from teachers and the administrators at Thurgood Marshall School as well. And in the process of all of this, one of the things that we were looking at doing was kind of exactly what you're saying, creating a little bit more of a unification for the first through eighth grade students. Right now, they go from Washington to Marshall and then on to Auburn. And so the idea that we could do something that created a little bit more consistency for them, and also kind of gave them something that they could be proud of in terms of a school name and a mascot for first through eighth grade was a piece of it. As far as answering the phones and kind of delineating ourselves as two separate buildings, because we are two separate administrations, we felt that we did need to do something along those lines. Right now, we answer the phones as Washington Academy, Marshall answers as Marshall. I'm not sure what Auburn does because they're a high school, and they have a lot of different programs within them. But basically, the idea of kind of referring to ourselves as the Gifted Academy at Marshall Elementary would be the piece that we would like to say when we, when we talk on the phone. So the idea that we are identifying ourselves as Marshall Elementary very specifically. And then the wrinkle that we did run into and that we did discuss is that Marshall is not Thurgood Marshall Middle School, they're Thurgood Marshall School. So that does create kind of a difference. Their spirit wear, their identification, their phones, all of that, at this point, is basically Marshall. That's how they answer and respond. So the idea that they may still be Marshall, or Thurgood Marshall, or however they decide to take that on, but that we very much identify ourselves as Marshall Elementary, we feel would give us enough of a separation to kind of make that appropriate delineation between the two buildings. I don't know if that answered your question, or if you have more to kind of.
Let me ask an administration question, then. I mean, we have Barber, our language immersion is through eighth, K through eight.
Right.
We have Montessori, which is pre-K through eight now.
Yes.
The year-round school is one of our other special programs, but it doesn't go through eighth grade.
No, it doesn't, right.
So, so why don't we just make Gifted first through eight? Why, I would ask that of the administration so that we would take away this differentiation. And I know there's benefits to having a middle school, but it's not really middle school because we've added fifth grade into it. So there's, there's some nuances.
So the program itself is a, or a first grade through 12th grade program. So we're talking about facilities, and since we don't have one facility that could probably house all K through eight right now, that would be a reason why we wouldn't do that right now. So because we don't have that facility, we have to have two different, two different locations. Again, those are differentiated by different addresses, different numbers. So even though it's a program that is coherently between, you know, for one through 12, buildings have to be separate. Does that answer your question?
Okay, and were there any other names or conversation that was, this is my last one, I'm just not there yet.
Many.
There are many. And so.
Okay, so basically, two years ago, when the facilities plan first came out, that our program would be moving to what is now the Hate Building. There were preliminary discussions about the idea of, you know, the name is Hate, the family has done a lot for the community, but at the same time, our program uses the name of the building. You know, Montessori doesn't. Montessori has always been Montessori, and then they happen to be at the John T. Hate Building. So there were very brief side conversations about that. By the time this became something that really was, I guess, happening, for lack of a better term on it, just in terms of the timeline, although there were parents that did make some other minor suggestions about other names that could be used, it basically, through the committee that we formed, PG, PGE, PTO, and then administrators, that the quickest solution to the problem would be to unify us as a first through eighth grade name. And, and again, part of that being the mascot and the color and all that, because our students are losing a lot of their identity as Washington Wolves, which maybe isn't a big deal in the long run for a lot of elementary students, but we tend in our building to have a lot of school pride, and we use that name a lot, and we use our color and all of that. So just, I think, from a simplification perspective, it seemed like the best option at the time. Maybe not based on questions, but that's what it seemed like initially.
Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I guess more discussion or comments. So it sounds like there was a process, you know, it sounds like people were involved in it, including parents and staff. So, you know, Mrs. McCulloch, you alluded to the fact that the building is called Hate, but Montessori is located there now, and they don't use that name. If you go to the Illinois Interactive Report Card, it says nothing about the Hate Building at all. It's referred to as the Maria Montessori School. So they've picked a different name, and I'm not even sure they went through really the board to do that, but they've picked, they've picked another name by which their program is known by, and I will tell you that I've heard resistance to using the word, the name Hate for that building because of the unfortunate phonetics. So I think that there was, that, I know there was a desire to change the name of the building so that that's not what it was referred to as. Whether this is the best solution, I don't know, but I wasn't really involved in the process, and I think other people were. So I guess the question is, if, you know, if we don't approve this, what are we going to do? Is it going to be the Hate Building for next year? Is that, is that going to be the result? I don't, what is the result?
Mr. Connor?
One question is, there are 52 petition signatures, what percentage of parents is that? Roughly? 10%? So in this process, how did you determine an agreement with the name change?
So again, based on the timeline and kind of the tight parameters we were under, we met on a Thursday in, at Washington, and the people that were there all, you know, had this conversation, and then we went and looked at the policy specifically to see what we would need to do to be able to bring this forward as a proposal for you, hopefully in a timely manner. One of the things we weren't aware of is that there'd be the double reading on it. So we were hoping to have something that we could provide to students before they left for summer break. And so we really did kind of the minimum of getting the signatures as far as that goes, and we were able to collect the 52 signatures at Pickup on Friday afternoon. And so our PTO members volunteered to be at Pickup and then talk to all of those parents that were outside that day to do the pickup.
So do you have a sense of, was there general agreement across a wider swath of the parents? Is there any feedback?
So the biggest feedback from parents that I receive, and I was the assistant principal within Washington before getting this position, so I've been part of the program for a couple of years now, is that the parents, again, are very turned off by the idea of being part of Hate School. And I respectfully want to say that without, you know, offending anyone or family of Mr. Hate, but at the same time, one of the things that isn't real palatable is the idea, especially with the Gifted program being there, and that you hate Gifted because that already tends to be kind of a, a bit of a hurdle within our system as far as the Gifted program being a magnet school and being accepted for what it is and for what our students are.
So you're comfortable that you had enough parent feedback and that you all are representing what you feel is really a consensus?
Yes.
Okay.
As well as parents of Gifted Education being the PGE officers present and part of it.
I'm thinking more overall, not just, yeah.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Siegel?
It seems like there's the concern that there's a identity that is going to be maybe solided a little bit by Hate. But in terms of things like, like spirit wear or printed collateral, and would you really have that title, Hate Gifted? And would it be, you know, how about Hate Mustangs? I mean, who, what, except the most calloused animal hater would say, oh, I don't hate Mustangs, or I hate Mustangs?
So one of the things that actually got brought up in the parent discussion that we had is that, for us, you know, our students play Reba basketball, they play soccer, they do things like that. And the idea that we do need something that we can put on a jersey and that, you know, we can say when you're playing another team, like, oh, we're playing, you know, so-and-so. But Reba is four or five, and soccer is four or five. And so if we are also a version of Marshall, then when we play, we can look at doing some things where we can combine our students with Marshall's fifth graders and have them actually continue to play together, which is what we've always done. You know, the unfortunate situation here is that we are losing fifth grade, and it wasn't something that we ever wanted to have happen, it just kind of ended up being that way. It just kind of ended up being that way based on the available space in our building and then the available space at Marshall School. So in theory, could we embrace and advertise the gifted academy as more of our brand? Yes. But again, do you want to play, you know, the program or the academy or the gifted kids? I don't know how to, we really did talk about that, like, how do we parlay this into something that we can have be part of our school pride and then also still connect us to our program? Go ahead.
You had indicated earlier about the way you answer, have been answering the phone at Washington. And could you repeat that? And how have you answered the phone at Washington?
We say Washington Academy.
Okay. So is the concern that if you answered the phone at Haight, you'd say "Haight Academy"?
No, we would say probably gifted academy at the John T. Haight Building.
Perfect.
Okay.
Because then now you're in control of what the name is and you get to drive whatever marketing is necessary to individual, it's supposed to be to parents, really. And as far as the, you know, actual curriculars, like you mentioned, it is fourth and fifth grade. They're not going to have a fifth grade uniform and a fourth grade uniform so they can pick out what grade they're in. They're going to wear the same uniform and it's going to be for the Marshall Mustangs, I presume.
Well, no, no. If they're, if they're fourth graders at our building, I mean, again, going back to the fact that you're two separate administrative teams, everything is separate. It's just if we can combine them together because they are all Mustangs, that does make it easier.
Oh, for sure.
But I don't think we can combine them if we are gifted academy at John T. Haight and then they're Marshall. I don't, I don't know enough of them.
If you're both called the Mustangs...
Well, I don't even know if we're the Mustangs. We don't, I mean, that's, there's a whole nother conversation, really. I mean, our kids will tell you that all mascots have to be alliterations because that's what they've seen. So if we're going "Haight," we're thinking "H." We've talked about lots of them.
Is that at just the middle school level or is that...
It's an elementary thing.
Oh, it's an elementary, okay.
Mm-hmm.
The Johnson Jets.
Brookview Back.
There you go.
Maybe not all of them.
Bloom Bulldogs, right?
I don't know. I mean, these are, again, I know, it's, I can tell you kind of from a resounding perspective that parents don't like the idea of having Haight as the school their kids go to, but I mean, that's kind of ridiculous.
Can I jump in?
Sure. You know, I just wanted to point out that the reason I support this and requested it is because even with the limited timeframe, this came out of a collaborative community process. This didn't come out of left field to change the name of the building. It came out of our strategic planning group. So we had two different public mechanisms. I'll admit, the second one was very brief because of the timing, but it's, I feel it's important that we listen to the voice of the people who are closest to the information and are most involved with this. And so I'm going to certainly encourage the board to consider this recommendation. I also will concur with what Mr. Rollins pointed out, which is this doesn't leave us much time to change course at this point. And there are a lot of logistical questions that this proposal answers, logistic questions this proposal answers that an alternate would not, for example, the fourth and fifth, the splitting the fourth and fifth grade, et cetera. So I think we've spent a lot of time discussing this and we certainly welcome that feedback. But now, because this is the second reading, we didn't get a lot of chance to make these adjustments in between. I wasn't aware there were so many concerns. I would have been happy to have the group spend more time addressing those had we known that. So again, based on all of that, it is my, it's something I would like to encourage the board to consider, that this is in fact a parent-supported recommendation and there is not an alternate proposal that has been created. There is not an opposite group that has a strong feeling, although you did hear some feedback in the community. That is my rationale for supporting it and I would encourage you to consider that.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, quick question. So what kind of precedence, so it seems like the main driver here is to, name-wise, be able to unify, you know, a program in different buildings, right? What kind of precedence are we setting here for future programs that may also be locating different buildings? So for example, if we had, if we ever drove academies down to the middle school and elementary school and the Bammitt program wanted to rename all those schools, you know, or unify name, what kind of precedence are we setting?
I don't think we send any, I don't think we're setting any precedence. This is a case-by-case decision. There's a protocol that the board has implemented and policy and that policy has to be followed and you ultimately have to decide whether or not you approve the decision. I do believe the policy was followed, which is another reason why I support this, but, and I think that's important, Mr. Escobedo, to consider any dangerous precedent that we could set. I don't think there's any ability to set a precedent here because each building is its own unique situation and I want to respect and honor the work that the planning committee did to try to unify the program and some of the practical issues that this solves. Do I think it's perfect? No, I don't know that anyone here is saying that there was a perfect choice here, but I think it is clearly the will of the people that are involved and I'm not aware that there's a real strong counter narrative among the stakeholders in the school currently.
Ms. Jackson, did you have a question? You had your light on earlier.
Well, I guess question, comment, or thought. So it looks like you guys did go through a process. And so as a board, if we send this back and it comes back with the same name, then what? I'm not sure why there's so much discussion. It sounds like you guys wanted to, it went through a process. This is the name that came about, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And so if we send it back, we could, you could very well come back with the same recommendation, right?
We could.
I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the motion to the naming and renaming of the facilities.
Mrs. McCullough? Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our second item tonight is the Keelbin Associates addendum to the consulting agreement. Is there a motion in a second to approve this consulting agreement?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Jackson?
I do have a couple. So it looks like this started off as a contract that was under $10,000, not to exceed $9,600, correct? Okay. And so they've exceeded that amount, which is why it's coming back to us?
Yes, the additional hours would bring that over 10. That's why we brought it to you last month and this month.
Okay. So the dollar amount says $4,800 and at first I found that confusing until I went to the back and did the math. So the not to exceed 19,2. Explain it. So the first contract was under $10,000, correct?
Yes. Yeah, one of the confusing factors is that it carries over two fiscal years. And we wanted to split the first two phases versus the last two phases because we wanted to assure, first of all, that the first two phases were creating and productive and producing the type of information we felt we needed to build upon for the second part. So we divided it into two $9,600, two different fiscal year phases. The opposite of our fear has come about and that is the information and the work that was done in phase one and two is so critical to what we're doing now with our computer processes that for another 60 hours, we feel we can really get a large return on that investment. So we added the $4,600 to the $9,600. That's why it comes out to be 14,400.
Well, that's not what I'm looking at. Actually, there's a second page to this, I believe, might be missing from the agenda details because under fiscal impact, I go to the next page and then it says operational services. So there were two contracts for under $10,000 for this consulting.
That's correct. And the second one was contingent upon the consultant doing quality work in the first.
Okay. And which fiscal years? I'm sorry, 15?
The current FY '16 and that's what we're asking to add on to.
So you're asking to add on an additional, it looks like 80 hours?
60 hours, which would be $4,800. $60 an hour.
Okay. I'm reading something that says there's requesting additional 80 hours at $60 an hour to complete phase one and two. This is what's in my packet for a dollar amount of $4,800.
I'm sorry, $80 at 60, 80 hours at $60 per hour. I said it backwards.
Okay, that's what I thought. And we entered this agreement in January of 2016, correct?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And I guess initially they thought that they could have this done before June 30, 2016, both phases? They thought they...
No. No, they, I'm sorry, they proposed the work not in, from the consultant's point of view, he wasn't looking at fiscal years. You know, typically, people think in calendar years. And so when he proposed it, we turned around and said, "We want to divide this in the fiscal years and the phases will work well, one and two this fiscal year, three and four the next fiscal year."
Okay. So, and I'm not sure, but so it says, it's completed phase one and two, such work is expected to be completed on or before 6:30, 2016. So that was not the expectation, that it would be completed by 6:30, phases one and two?
That is the expectation and he would be completing the work at the remainder of this month.
How many hours have been completed to date on these phases, phase one and two? You know?
Yeah, I can tell you. 120 hours. 120 hours have been completed, 60 more would be done.
What, phase one and two?
Yes.
Okay. And so they're requesting 80 additional hours, which would bring this to 200 hours for phases one and two, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that work will be done on or before 6:30, 2016?
Yes. In fact, I had a meeting with him today to assure that that could be completed.
Okay. And then when you go a little further, there is a cross off, and I apologize, I lost the page, which actually takes this, a term date of June 30, 2016 to June 30, 2017. What phase is that for again?
Those would be phases three and four.
And it's the same, but we're not being asked to approve that tonight?
No, we're not.
So already, so have we already paid about $20,000? Is that what I'm understanding? I just want to be clear because this is, it's just confusing because we've already had two contracts under $10,000, right?
As of tonight, we've paid $9,600.
We've only paid $9,600?
Correct. With approval tonight, if we receive approval by the end of this month, we would, the total amount, including the $9,600, would be $14,400. It would be the other 80 hours. So two-thirds of the hours are done. Two-thirds of the hours were in the initial approval. An additional one-third of the time for the fiscal year '16 is being requested this evening.
I'll let someone else jump in.
Mr. Segal?
What's the likelihood that phases three and four are really going to stick to the proposed number of hours? Or is it likely to also, and, because this is, just to make it sound spectacular, they missed their estimate by about 50%, which sounds worse than just 60 hours. What's the likelihood that that'll happen in phases three and four? Phase three, it looks like it's a pretty time-intensive aspect of this.
Good question. I'd like to clarify that so it's not misleading. They did not, they did not underestimate, they did not go over the estimated time. We requested that they do additional information that was above and beyond the original scope of work for one and two because we saw an opportunity to get our accounts and two computer processes ready for the proposed data warehouse solution that we're looking at. So we actually requested to expand the work and doing that, we requested additional authorization on the dollars. On three and four, I do not anticipate Keelbin Associates going over the time. They actually met the timeframe that they proposed, we proposed additional work and they said they would be glad to do it with your approval.
Ms. Jackson?
But that's not how it reads and I think that's what's confusing basically because it implies that because they didn't get the work done, they're requesting additional hours for phase one and two.
Well, I wrote, I wrote the report and I did not intend to imply that.
Okay. So then on the addendum, appendix, I don't know, it's now not to exceed 400 hours for a total of 2,400.
Yes, that would be all four phases.
So all four phases together will not exceed 24, not 2,400, 24,000?
24,000, correct.
All four phases?
Right. 96 has been completed and paid. We're asking for another 80 hours, which is 48. The original dollar amount that we predicted for phases three and four would be another 96 and that's where the $24,000 total comes.
I thought you weren't asking us to approve phase three and four tonight.
I'm not, but, you know, we just listed that in the initial, original agreement, not what we're looking at tonight, the addendum, that there were phases one, two, three, and four. Phases one and two would be not to exceed $9,600. Phases three and four, $9,600. Then we asked the consultant if he would be willing to do this additional work to get us ready for our computer systems. He said he would. He said it would take 80 hours to do that, basically two weeks, and that we said we would seek approval, which we introduced last month and are asking for approval this month.
I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the Keel and Associates addendum to the consulting agreement.
Mr. Segal? Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
We will now move on to our next item, which is the revisions to the board policies. Yeah, let's do these together unless anyone has any objection to that.
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Rollins, did you have a question? Oh, no, sorry. Okay. Mr. Connor?
I was just going to make the motion.
Okay. Motion?
Motion to approve C through...
H.
H.
Those are the Board of Education requirements for terms and duties of the board officers, operational services, fiscal and business management, fund balance policy, accounting and audits, student-student-athlete concussions and head injuries, and community relations, community use of school facilities. Is there a second for the motion? Ms. Jackson, do you have?
I have a question.
All right. I need a second to the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Questions or comments? Ms. Jackson?
So all of the proposed changes, are they because of statute?
Some of the changes are...
Microphone.
Oops. Some of the changes deal with certain budget and finance issues, which are in accordance with recommendations made by the district's auditor for changes in management. The concussion protocol change is made to bring it up to date in accordance with state and federal law and recommendations from the IHSA.
Mr. Connor?
So for policy 4.80, let me just say for the record that I think $5,000 as a definition of a capital asset is quite low, which I've said before, but totally okay with it. It's just, it just seems mighty low for a capital asset.
Any other comments or questions? I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the motion to approve the revisions of the board policies listed under C through H.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch? Yes. Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now on to new business.
I think we take these together too.
Mr. Schmidt? We are going to talk about the four requests for eminent domain.
Yes, tonight we have four eminent domains going forward on there. We also have Mr. Lester here that would help because he helped prepare these resolutions. Part of the capital plan is to acquire property, approximately 11 parcels over by Lincoln Middle School for land acquisition for expanding the green space out there. We have four right now that we feel that we're at a stalemate with them. We need to move them on farther along in the process where the individuals have been unresponsive since the initial offer letter sent to them in January with our consultant that's hiring the land acquisition. Up to individuals will not let our appraiser into the building to readjust the appraisals. We have an individual that lives in California that just doesn't want to deal with us. So we feel it's based on the recommendation of our land acquisition consultant to move these two eminent domains so we can continue on with this process.
Any discussion or comments? Mr. Connor?
Couple of questions. Number one is, so for the record, we've made good faith attempts and over a period of time to engage with these property owners. And basically, the story here is that they have not engaged at all by and large.
Correct. Some have not engaged at all and some of them have engaged and they just will not budge on that. They want up to 60% more than our appraisal value that we have out there. So they will not let us go in there and look at the appraisals. Our initial offers on these went back in early part of January and one of them in early part of February.
And each one of the offers is supported by an appraisal, which we provided to them. There are a whole, there are other properties that are involved where they have, homeowners have gotten their own appraisals and we working on, continuing to work it out. There'll be contracts for a lot of the properties will be coming to the board over the next month. One of the items that you're considering of these four may be pulled by the time it gets to the board for approval because I was contacted by an attorney for the homeowner at 314 12th Street today. And we've talked about a process of moving it along and they're interested in selling it. You know, the district is interested in resolving these things and not going through eminent domain proceedings. That is not the goal. These people simply, homeowners, despite numerous attempts at being contacted, in, you know, in writing, our land acquisition consultant actually goes and knocks on their doors. And we make every attempt to try, but they simply will not respond.
So I think the, the net of this for the public is that this is an absolutely last option, that we've tried both in good faith to either negotiate and contact people. So we don't take this lightly, but when we do reach the point where there is no engagement, this is where we end up. But nobody likes this.
Mr. Escobedo, did you have a comment you wanted?
Yeah, well, I think Mr. Lester just kind of clarified that a little bit. Just to be clear, again, for community purposes, we state that if we approve this, this is a last resort. But then again, if, if negotiations continue and progress, you may not use it at all.
Correct.
So just for clarification purposes, you're, if we approve this, there's always that possibility that negotiation continues and may not use.
That is correct. Okay? Any other comments? This will come up for a vote then at our board meeting on June 28. Is there any other new business or items? I just want to send out a reminder to our board that on the Saturday on June 18th, we're having our Saturday board retreat starting at 8:30 at the boardroom at Switch American Hospital. And then on June 21st, we have the 5:30 Tuesday evening committee planning with Dean Langdon. We'll be here to facilitate that from the IHSA. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Pose same sign. We are adjourned at 8:13.